Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay of a lodium Morse pradium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Uh, today is Class 33. Class 33. What did we learn in Class 32? We started learning about what's called a warranty deed. The warranty deed. And what is a warranty deed? The warranty deed is the application, the document, the writ, that allows the foreigners to hold property in Morocco. It is what you call the lawful document, according to the treaty, that the foreigners, i.e. the citizens of the United States of America, have been given permission by the Sultan to have what's called a deed, to hold a deed, i.e. to hold property. However, if you read the treaty, the Sultan allowed the citizens of the United States of America to hold a deed. But did the Sultan say it was a warranty deed? No. The Sultan said deed. So Moors must start understanding that the colonists, i.e. the foreigners that's in Morocco, like to add prefixes to words. So the Sultan gave them permission to have deeds. The word warranty is not in the treaty. So why did they add the word warranty in front of the word deed? It's because it's what you call their confessions. See, the colonists think that they can put a word together. As long as they put it in a book or a document, it becomes a fact. But is it true? Well, they put the truth on the burden of the people. It's up to the people to come back and validate whether it is a fact of truth. So therefore, they put the word warranty in front of the word deed and they confess it. Warranty means what? Contemporary. Contemporary means what? Snapshotted time. Contemporary means what? There's something that's erroneous, an error. Erroneous, error, erroneous. So Moors must understand that the colonists, i.e. the foreigners, are always confessing their crimes against humanity. Their crimes against their own citizens of the United States. So if we continue to read, Moors, understand that we must use what's called discernment. We read. What does read mean to comprehend? So Moors must understand, the reason why we're going slowly through this is because we're comprehending. Comprehending what? Understanding nature's law, mother's law, common law, jurisprudence. That way, we can maintain what's called equality, which is what you call justice. Alright? So today, we'll continue on. Like I said, today is Class 33. We're excited about Class 33 as we're usually excited about all our classes, alright? Alright, so let's go ahead and open up, as we usually do. Let's be redundant. So, what is the mission and vision? The mission and vision statement is what? To create the United States of Morocco again, right? Okay, let's continue to be redundant. Alright, Moors. What are we using? Discipline. Discipline determines our destination. We need discipline, Moors. To create what? This desire. And only way we're gonna create this desire is through discipline. Discipline to do what? Put together our states, right? Our Circle 7 State of Facts is about what? State of Facts, the facts of our Moors sovereign states. State of Facts and judicial notice coming from the Consular Court or coming from your Minister of Foreign Affairs giving notice to the foreigners of the status of your state. So you got Exhibit A, the Moors Constitution. Exhibit B, Moors State Seal. Exhibit C, your Moors Provincial State Flag. Exhibit D, the Moors Empire of Morocco Flag. Exhibit E, Allegiance and Oath, which is the Moor that ties all this together. You pledge allegiance to these applications, which is your constitution, seal, etc. Last but not least, Exhibit F, Public Inauguration Video, putting it on the record. Alright? Okay, Moors, let's continue. So so far, being redundant. Right now, we're dealing with what? Consular Court of the State. Consular Court has done what? Given the foreigners notice. Several notices. We're using what's called equality. We're reigning in the order. Order through what? The court. Remember, Moors, when we read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787, in the preamble, it says that they were reigning in the order. The order of what? The courts. Everything started in a Morocco court. So where are we starting? We started with putting together the Constitution and through that Constitution, we have Consular Court. And through that court, we're now reigning in the order, okay? So what's happening? Where are we right now, Moors? So through Consular Court of the State, we got number one, State of Facts Judicial Notice Mediation. We sent that document, which is along with your Circle 7 exhibits, which is discovery friendly applications. Number two, injunction to relief order, which is your arbitration before litigation, which is again, you're resubmitting your Circle 7 exhibits, which is your discovery friendly applications. And then number three, we get into contempt of court order, which is fines, lawsuits, litigation. Okay? So through number three, that's where we are right now, Moors. We've already submitted the contempt of court orders. We're seeking what now? Fines through a lawsuit, litigation, a tort. A tort claim. Lawsuit, litigation. We're utilizing what as what? Our delegation of authority orders is our constitution, Moors constitution, along with the treaties. Act of Al-Jasara's Articles 101 and 102, et cetera. Seeking fines, penalties, and confiscations, alright? So now, we're on to number four. Okay, Moors. Number four. Surety bond lien on property, which is the penalties. That's where we're at right now, Moors. We're going through the fundamentals, building up government and understanding how to maintain equality, alright? How we reign in the order. How do we do that? By studying the Treaty of Madrid, 1880. By studying the Act of Al-Jasara's, 1906. By now, understanding the functions of the Qadi, who's the deed tax commissioner, or you could say assessor. We're talking about now, notice of lien of surety bond. We'll get into that, Moors, as we continue to understand the fundamentals. We'll start understanding how do you actually place a lien, the surety bond, on the forms, alright? How do we do that? Lien levied against the warranty deed. How do we go about putting the lien on the warranty deed? We'll get there, Moors. Right now, we're building up our fundamentals, okay? So if Moors, right now, you're putting together your constitution, now you're reigning in the order by sending out your State of Facts Judicial Notice and giving them time for redress. After that, you're sending out what? Your injunction to relief because they're still infringing upon your state rights. After that, you're sending out what? Contempt of court sanctions from Consular Court. So all that's gonna be over a period of time. So therefore, by the time the Moors get to that time, they'll start understanding how to move forward. And step four, then we get to step five. What's step five, Moors? Now you're enforcing what? Ergo omnis principles of international law. We'll talk about that in the future, Moors. Meaning towards all or towards everyone, which is the state rights of the Moors. We'll be talking about lien on warranty deeds levied by the Qadi. We'll be talking about trespassing land, which is a part of ergo omnis. Then we'll be talking about confiscation, sale of property, and satisfaction. We'll talk about how to do all of that stuff, Moors. So what are we talking about? We're talking about mediation, which is equality. We're reigning in the order. Then we go into litigation. We're still reigning in the order, it's equality. We're taking it step by step. And litigation's about what? Fines, penalties, and confiscations. So we keep learning about that, Moors. Then we build up, we're escalating, okay? But what are we also doing? We're maintaining equality instead of inequality. Moors cannot be in a status of inequality. We maintain equality, okay? Alright. So we've been talking about the Qadi, right? The Qadi Black Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition, but you can also look back even as far as the first edition of the Black Law Dictionary. You even see the definition of Qadi, C-A-B-I. It's in the first edition of Henry Camel Black's Law Dictionary. So don't let the colonists fool you and to believe they don't know the hell you're talking about when you start talking about the Qadi. They know exactly what the Qadi is and its function. But keep in mind, Moors, the Qadi cannot be de facto. The Qadi cannot be self-appointed. The Qadi must be competent. What do I mean when I say competent? The Qadi must now be a part of your Circle 7 State of Facts. What's the Circle 7 State of Facts? Your government. So the Qadi can operate through the state. The Qadi cannot be self-appointed, alright? So don't let the colonists fool you and believe they don't know what a Qadi is. Soon as they start seeing that on your documentation, they know that we're coming for the E state, alright? Now, keep in mind, Moors, I know something matter, especially ever since Class Number 26, has been about the jab. Everybody's talking about the jab. But that's subject matter. How do we use counterintelligence to now change the narrative? Well, that's easy. You don't talk about the jab, subject matter. You start with what? The four principles. What is what? Status. What's your nationality? Jurisprudence. That's mother's law, nature's law, common law. Jurisprudence. What's second? Now we're talking jurisdiction. What jurisdiction? It's based upon your permanent dominions based upon your constitution. That sets forth the laws. So therefore, when you're enforcing your law that's now objecting or rejecting to the jab and therefore, now you have what's called an application of difference because the colonists are trying to enforce their statutes over your common law, okay, now you get into the third. What's the third? Venue. Venue is Consular Court to deal with all disputes between a Moor and a citizen of the United States of America, alright? Last but not least, what are you talking about? The subject matter. Subject matter is always last, alright? So Moors, if we're talking about law, jurisprudence, justice, now we're using counterintelligence. They don't no longer wanna talk about the jab no more. Why? Because you're coming after the E state. You're coming after their deeds that they have labeled as warranty deed and we find out the word warranty means what? Fraud, fake, false representation, erroneous, contemporary, temporary. It's a con, con artist, right? Con, right? Two-faced, two-faced, right? They renege on their promises, okay? Alright. So let's talk about this, okay? What are we talking about right now? How to use Consular Court and the Qadi of the executive branch on behalf of mother's law. What's mother's law right now? We're talking constitution of the state, the Moors state. So mother's law is now utilizing her law to enforce her law, okay? She's bringing out who? She's bringing out these chess pieces. What are these chess pieces? The Qazi of the Consular Court, the judge. And she's bringing out the Qadi, who is the deed tax assessor. So in the constitution, you've got your Qazi and your Qadi, okay? So what are we talking about right now? Listen, Moors. We're talking about Consular Court and the Qadi of the state. That's what we're talking about right now. Enforcing what? The constitution of your state. These are what you call the de jour officials. De jour, meaning they're competent. De jour, competent, okay? They're not de facto and incompetent. They're de jour incompetent. Why? Because they're working through the state, okay? So what are we talking about right now? We're talking about the legislative branch. What's the legislative branch? The matriarchal council. And through the matriarchal council, the matriarchal council puts together legislative branch. Through the legislative branch, now she utilizes her law to now bring in the judicial branch, the Consular Court, which is the Qazi. The Qazi through Consular Court is not issuing orders, reigning in the order from Consular Court. Now Consular Court issues now an order to the Qadi to give the Qadi now cause and effect to go check the validity and conformity of the deeds that the Sultan allow the foreigners to hold as property, okay? So what happens when mother's law, working through the government, brings in both the Qadi of the executive branch and brings in the Consular Court of the judicial branch? What happens? The Qazi and the Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks when strategically used in combination of each other. The Qazi's contempt sanctions will cause the Qadi to satisfy the validity of the title, i.e. the deed, and conformity to the Mohammedan law. What's the Mohammedan law? State law, your constitution and its government. It's three branches of governments, Mohammedan law, okay, Moors? What is all that called? Political counterintelligence. Countering. What are we countering? Any subject matter that's infringing upon our state rights, such as the jab, traffic tickets, IRS, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What are we doing using counterintelligence? We're countering the colonists, they have their applications. We're countering with the common law of our constitution, okay? It's counterintelligence. And when you're dealing with counterintelligence, what do you do? You're using what? Your IQ. Your intelligence. To understand what defense do they have? What offense do they have? What defense do we have? What offense do we have? And how do we determine that? A, you take a look at your constitutions. B, you take a look at the treaties. C, you take a look at the Charter of United Nations. C, you look at declarations, obligations. These are all obligations for both sides to look at, i.e. the rules of engagement. The due process of law. And everybody's entitled to due process of law, alright? Okay, let's continue. Okay. So the Qadi is doing what? If I can have a mother read Chapter 4 three times, the title.
Chapter 4, A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues. Chapter 4, A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues. Chapter 4, A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues.
Okay, Moors. Let me, mother, thank you very much. Keep in mind, Moors, Sidi Mohammed allowed the colonists to stay as long as they pay. So Moors are now enforcing the law. All treaties are about amity and commerce. That must be understood. That the United States of America and the United States agree to the Act of Congress, excuse me, the Act of Al-Jasara's, 1906, which this is now Chapter 4, okay? Now we're gonna get into Article 60. We're going to be redundant. Moors need to understand what is our delegation of authority orders? Listen to me, Moors. What am I saying? It's not a matter of choice whether we're gonna utilize the Qadi or not. The Qadi has obligations through the government because the treaty is supreme law of the land. So we have no choice but to utilize the Qadi. The Qadi has a charge, the affairs, the goal, and satisfy himself of the conformity of their deeds according to state rights. Moors state rights based upon the custom usage of our law through our constitution. We're obligated. Why? Treaties, supreme law of the land. So we're obligated to now satisfy ourselves. They're obligated to what? Not infringing on our state rights, alienating our rights, and now moving out the way and not creating any what's called supervening the impossibility of performance allowing the Qadi to come and check the validity of their deeds, okay? Alright. So let's go into Article 60. Okay, mother, if you can read Article 60, please.
Article 60, in accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Shereefian Empire and His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance.
Stop. Okay, Moors, listen. Deeds. Deeds. The foreigners are allowed to have deeds. Didn't it say warranty deed? It said deeds. So the colonists, i.e. the foreigners, have put the word warranty in front of the word deed. Why? They think that's gonna help them with their karmatic debt to society. Because what? They put the words in a book and said it's the obligation of the people to go back and check the validity of the warranty. What is the definition of warranty? A warranty is a promise that a proposition of fact is true. What did we learn in Class 32? It may be a material fact, but is it true? Well, how do you know it's true? You don't know it's true until you go back and check the validity of that material fact. The old saying is, trust but verify, right? Buy or beware. So therefore, when they put in a book, a law dictionary, that's their confessions of saying to themselves they're clear of any debt, any karma because it's the obligation of the people to read, okay? But it's not gonna help them because they still gonna have to deal with clocks of destiny to understand that everything will be dealt with in a competent court, alright, based upon equality. Okay. Now, I'm gonna underscore this word, Moors. There's a reason why we went into this in Class 32, contemporaneous. So we learned contemporaneous means a lot of different things, right? It's a lot of words inside such a long word. You gotta understand why it's such a long word. It's because there's words disguised within the word. Moors have to learn how to read and stop pronouncing words, okay? So we learned that contemporaneous really is what you call erroneous. Wrong or incorrect, false promise, or a false contract, okay? So warranties are contemporaneous. We must understand that. What does contemporaneous mean? Contemporary, mother, if you can read that for me, please.
Contemporary, existing on occurring in the same period of time.
Thank you. So what are we saying? They're saying anytime they're using contemporaneous as language, they're only talking about an existing or occurring in the same period of time to talk about time, only existing in that moment. Because they know everything they're doing is unwarranted. They give you a warranty that's unwarranted. They know this. We'll keep proving that today, okay, Moors? What is the purpose of AMPAC study class today? In all classes? Is that way Moors start building on what's called the fundamentals of reading, understanding government, understanding what the calls have done, and understanding what the Moors have not done. We have not been reading. We have not been enforcing the law because we didn't understand law and we certainly didn't understand international law. So AMPAC study session is about bringing all the Moors together that when we all have the basic fundamentals as Moors start to create their constitutions in their states, we all had a fundamental that goes into the concept and context of our states, alright? So let's keep disclosing the confessions of the colonists. They always tell on themselves, okay? Alright, let's continue. Okay, as a refresher, this is the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 11. We must always remind ourselves, the Sultan gave the foreigners permission to hold property in Morocco. Okay, mother, if you can read this, please.
Article 11, the right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government and the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country.
Okay. Now, I know Moors at home really can't see this as well. But any of the Moors at home who have a copy of the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, can see this small print at the bottom. This small print at the bottom, if a mother can read this, please.
Implemented by Article 60 of General Act of Al-Jasara's of April 7, 1906.
Okay, thank you. So what's happening here? These are the footnotes that the United States, not to be confused with the United States of America, have put into this document. These are their notes. So don't let them fool you into saying they don't know the hell the Moors are talking about. Now, keep in mind, the word hell's not a bad word. The word hell's in the Bible.
It's a bad word.
Alright, so here we go. Implemented by Article 60 of the General Act of Al-Jasara's of April 7, 1906. What are they doing? They're giving cross-referenced notes saying what? That Article 11 is in conjunction to the Act of Al-Jasara's, Article 60. They're giving themselves instructions to understand what gives them their delegation of authority orders to have deeds. So don't let them fool you. They don't know what the Qadi is or their obligations to the Qadi, i.e. the government of the Moors states, okay? Let's continue, Article 11. Okay, mother.
Any questions that may arise concerning this right shall be decided according to the same laws with the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulated in the treaty.
Okay, Moors, so just to get a basic understanding of what's happening here, what's the Qadi? Issues his liens or her liens against the warranty deed of the forms. The only thing they can do after that point is come and petition the Minister of Foreign Affairs to have a discussion. That's all they can do. So what does that mean? We're reigning in the order. They have no choice but to now capitulate to the Moors government. That is their only resolve in dealing with this. They must do that first before they even take it to the United Nations. Listen. The colonists, i.e. the foreigners, have to come and petition the Minister of Foreign Affairs after the Qadi has put the lien on the deed. Those are specific instructions of a treaty, treaty supreme law of the land, which means what? They gotta come to a Moroccan government to get an understanding of what's next dealing with that warranty deed. Let's continue. Okay. You see this word, hold? Black Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition. Wait a minute. Article 11. This is how Moors have to study. The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. They have a right to hold property. Hold it. Hold it. That means possess it. But they don't own it under a lodial title. They hold it based upon what's called feudal title. We'll learn about that. They possess, not own. Possess is foreigners. Feudal law. Ownership is a lodio, okay? So what is hold? This is how Moors must study. The right to hold property, okay? What's the definition of hold? Mother, can you read hold for me, please?
Hold, noun. In old law, senior, a word constantly occurring in conjunction with others as prehold, leasehold, copyhold, et cetera, but rarely met within a separate form.
Thank you, mother. Okay, listen, Moors. The Black Law Dictionary doesn't hardly have the eight parts of speech whenever you're looking up words. So when you see the eight parts of speech, they're really making emphasis about something. Hold, noun. They immediately go into what? In the old law, what's the noun about? People. The sovereigns of the land. Now they're making distinctions about persons as well. So you're talking the people. Who the people? The landlord. And then you're talking about persons. Who the person's tins, okay? So in the old law, is the noun, okay? But then, you see the period? Now, period, now. In the old law, so old law is the people. The soil. The people. The organic people of the land. But then they go into... The soil, the people, the organic people of the land, but then they go into tenure, period. I'm gonna make sense of this for you. In old law, period, what's the old law? Nature's law, mother's law, common law, jurisprudence. Then they go into tenure, period, they're doing this for a reason Morse, you gotta catch how they talk. Tenure, period, separate sentence. They're now intermixing the word hold. That's how Black's Law Dictionary is, they intermix where they're talking about people versus persons, they intermix it. Sometimes you'll pick up on these subtleties, but they're not so subtle, once you start recognizing it ain't subtle no more, it just jumps out at you. I'm gonna make sense of this for you, I promise. Okay, a word constantly occurring in conjunction with others as freehold, leasehold, copyhold, etc., but rarely met within the separate form, so it's not separate, it's conjunction. Conjunction to what? A freehold, so they got a, they have rule. The colonists, we're talking hold, they have right to hold property, so what they have? The free liberty to hold deeds. Cause the Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land, they have a right to have a deed. They freely hold a deed. But the deed is what? A lease. If not ownership, it's lease. And they only have a copy. Copy of what? They have a copy of the warranty deed. But they're not getting a copy of the original, what's the original? The treaty. So they're getting a copy of the warranty. Warranty deed, but who's got the original? The colonists hold on to the original. They don't let their citizens know about the real original, the genuine, a lodio, which is the treaty. So let's start all over. They have a right to freely hold deeds, but their deeds is a lease status. And they only have a copy of that lease. A copy of. Okay? So, but rarely met within a separate form, they tell you right there, all three deeds are what? The same. They all have different meaning, you gonna look these words up, we won't look them up today. But they're in conjunction. Okay? But they're telling, the colonists are doing what? They're telling their citizens, listen Morse, they're telling their citizens, your, your deeds are just a lease. Deeds are not permanent, why? Because they're based upon a term condition. Their treaties are for fifty years at a time. If the treaty is not renewed, their deeds become null and void, they are dead paper, dead promises, dead pledge.
Tenure is the fifty years.
Fifty years of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And that treaty expires the year twenty thirty-six. It must be negotiated by twenty thirty-five because the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article twenty-five, says it must be negotiated by one of the petitioning parties that's looking to abandon, must be negotiated twelve months in advance, that's one year in advance, we're talking the year twenty thirty-five. So the colonists at the very least only have fourteen years to negotiate. No fourteen years gonna go by fast. They gonna go by faster when Morse start putting together the states, cause then the Moors, at any time, any one of the parties can do what? A petition to abandon the treaty. Keep in mind, the treaty is a warranty. The treaty, because it can be enforced, warranties can be enforced even if they've been presented as a false representation. But our treaties are what? Dejour, they're based in principles, so that warranty can't be enforced, but they haven't been enforced, it's the, the Moors' obligation to enforce it. That warranty, that application. Those well-studied principles of international law, mother's law, that's what a treaty is. Okay? Let's look up the definition of holder, so they get the hold, and look at holder, okay? Holder, mother?
Holder, the holder of a bill of exchange, promissory note, our check is the person who has legally acquired possession of the same by endorsement or delivery, and who is entitled to receive payment of the instrument.
Thank you, mother, okay, holder. The holder of a bill of exchange, promissory note, or check is the person who has legally, legally, not lawfully, legally acquired possession of the same by endorsement or delivery, and who is entitled to receive payment of the instrument, what's happening? So if you're the holder, Taj Mahal is always talking about the holder in due course. The holder in due course, we're gonna get there, I'm building you up to it. Holder, the holder of a bill of exchange, what's a bill of exchange? So now you're talking about what? Their constitution for the United States talks about what? Bills of exchange ex post facto. Okay? They're not allowed to create bills of exchange ex post facto, bill of attainder. Bill of attainder ex post facto. But what did they create? They created what? Promissory notes. Was a bill of attainder ex post facto, ex post facto. What it mean, after the fact, after the fact of what? Treaties. They created legalities that are warranties, and the warranty is contemporaneous. Erroneous, error. It's dishonored, it has a defect, we'll learn about that. So, let's start from top, the holder of a bill of exchange, promissory note, we'll learn about promissory note, promissory note, promissory note, we'll learn about that, or check is the person who has legally acquired possession of the same by endorsement or delivery, and who is entitled to receive payment of the instrument, okay? So, it's a possession of what? The warranty deed, they have possession, not ownership, because their possession is a lease, not ownership, let's continue. This all makes sense to you? Holder in due course, okay, mother?
Holder in due course, a holder who has taken a bill of exchange, check or note, complete and regular on the face of it, under the following conditions, namely, A, that he became the holder of it before it was overdue and without notice that it had been previously dishonored and such was the fact. B, that he took the bill, check or note, in good faith and for value, and that at that time it was negotiated to him, he had no notice of any defect in the title of the person who negotiated it, uniform negotiable instrument case law.
Yep, okay, well, thank both. Holder in due course. Now Moors who wanna do some basic research, go back and look up what's called the Clearfield Doctrine of the United States, the Clearfield versus the United States, not the United States of America. Clearfield versus the United States, not the United States of America. Cause the United States is a corporation, after Congress eighteen seventy-one, the United States can be sued and then pleaded. So the United States got sued by Clearfield. So in Clearfield versus United States, in that, the Supreme Court of the municipal corporation known as the United States Supreme Court came out and said that the United States citizens or their entities, or their states must be the holder in due course if they wanna enforce contracts. That they are no longer a public government, they are a private entity. And they must be the holder in due course, but wait a minute, why do I just tell you that? What does holder in due course mean? This is Supreme Court of their corporation telling everyone they must be the holder in due course, Supreme Court. Catch what I'm saying? Okay, let's go and understand what does holder in due course mean? Holder in due course, a holder who has taken a bill of exchange, check or note, complete and regular on the face of it. What's happening? On the face of it, see how they talk? What does the face mean? The interpretation, the representation, on the face, it looks good, but it's counterfeit. On the face of it, gotta listen how they talk. Under the following condition, namely, now listen, this is when they confess, listen to their confessions. A, that he became the holder of it before it was overdue and without notice that it had been previously dishonored. And such was the fact. Let's read it again. Confessions, they're saying what? Anything that's a holder in due course, what's the holder in due course? Warranty deeds. Any type of warranties, based upon their statutes, is a holder in due course of a document or writ. A memorandum, we're learning about this, listen. Holder in due course is what? A, that he became the holder of it before it was overdue and without notice that it had been previously dishonored. What's been dishonored? The deed. The deed is dishonored, why? Cause they called the warranty deed, A, they renamed it warranty deed, not just deed. Two, the reason why they call it warranty deed, cause they know their warranties are unwarranted. Cause the Kai D did not satisfy himself of the conformity of that deed. So they say on the face of it, it looks like it's legitimate, warranty deed. But it's not, they know it's not, once someone comes and now checks what? The validity of it, to see if it's true. So let's read it again, it's gonna make sense. That he became the holder of it before it was overdue, what's overdue? They owe us taxes on those deeds, it's overdue. Who they owe, who owes taxes? The colonists, I E. the foreigners who are holding property owes the Moroccan government taxes in Morocco, the empire. So it's overdue. And without notice that it had been previously dishonored, they never, look, without notice, without notice, without notice, they never gave notice to their citizens that their warranty deed is what? Dishonored. You see how they talk, they confess. Let's go on to section two, B, I should say. B, that he took the bill, what's a bill? A debt, ain't been paid. A check or note, we're gonna learn about note. We're called, we're talking contemporaneous. Contemporaneous, in good faith and for value, and that the time it was negotiated, the time it was negotiated, the time it was negotiated, what that mean, contemporaneous? In that time. To him had no notice or any defect in the title of the person, I'm gonna go back and read it, don't worry. Start here, the time it was negotiated to him, he had no notice of any defect in the title of the person who negotiated, so let's start from the top. Make it make sense for you. B, that he took the bill, who's he? The citizens of the United States. They took the bill, check or note, in good faith, what's good faith? On the face of it. To him, he had no, he had no notice, he had no notice, had no notice, what notice did they give him? That the deed is unwarranted. No notice of any defect, so they're right here to tell you, the holder in course, due course, isn't aware that there's a defect in the title. What title? The deed. The deed has defects. And the colonists are not telling those who have warranty deeds, there's a defect and it's dishonored. Cause the Kai D did not give its stamp sealed from the state to transfer that deed. Of the deed title of the person who negotiated, okay? So what's happening? The Supreme Court of the United States Corporation said their citizens must be the holder in due course, but the holder in due course of what? Something that's dishonored and has a defect. And they're already admitting it in real time under holder in due course. These are confessions by the colonists. Why are we reading this? The Moors must build up their fundamentals and understanding. That when the Moors put together their dejour competent states, we must have the confidence in moving forward with this pen. I'm giving you by just illustrating and narrating the truth. That they tell you the truth. That their statutes, ordinance, policies, etc., are all contemporaneous, I E. erroneous, I E. false statements, I E. fraud. And they confess it. So Moors need to move forward with their pen, because the colonists are telling you already, everything they're doing is legally invalid. Let's continue. So, holder in due course, right? But wait, let's go back. Remember I was diving all into deep with this, now, the old law, common law. Then they, tenure, period. Oh, now we gotta look up tenure, cause they trying to tell you follow the yellow brick road. Tenure. Okay? Mother, if you can read the definition of tenure, Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition?
Tenure, the mode or system of holding lands or tenements in subordination to some superior, which in the feudal ages was the leading characteristics of real property.
Thank you. Confessions by a criminal. Listen. Tenure, the mode of systems of holding lands, they're holding lands, of tenements in subordinate, in subordination to some superior. They're subordinate to some superior. Well, who's the superior? The Moors. According to the treaty, Treaty of Supreme Law of Land. A more. Moorish government is the superior, the a lodio. A lodio is superior. Which, in the feudal ages, wait, now they telling you now, tenure is what? Feudal. Feudal is what? The opposite of a lodio. So if they got a feudal status, they're telling you immediately that what? Subordinate. Okay, well, who's superior? A lodio. So tenure means feudal, feuding with the owls, who's the owls? The Moors. Okay? Wait a minute. We gotta keep reminding ourselves, what are we talking about? Article eleven, Treaty of Maria, Madrid, I'm teaching the Moors how to use the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, how do we use it? We're building up fundamentals. The Sultan allowed them what? To have the right to hold property. Where? In Morocco, okay, keep that in mind. So they defined it through their statutes as tenure. What is tenure? Time. What is time? Contemporaneous. The mode of system of holding lands, they're holding, see? They know they can only hold. Hold lands and tenements in such subordination to some superior, superior to what? The Kai D, the Moroccan government. Which, in the feudal ages, was leading characteristics of real property. So they're talking property. Feudal law versus a lodio law, but they're telling you immediately, their time, their tenure, their contemporaneous status is subordinate to a superior. They just gonna tell you who the superior is, cause you're supposed to know that. Okay, mother? Now they gonna go and confess some more, confessions by a criminal. Who are we talking about? What criminal? We're talking about the administrators of the United States Corporation. Who are the administrators? Who are the criminals? Who's the administrators? The judges, the attorneys, the lawyers, the esquires. Who are the criminals? Who's the administrators? The governors, the mayors, House of Representatives, the senators. Who else are the administrators? Now you talking about the lobbyists. Who control the legislators? Well, who controls the lobbyists? The Federal Reserve, the bankers. The bankers control everything. Well, who are the bankers? The Jesuits. The Jesuits control the Federal Reserve, keep in mind Morse, we talked about the Federal Reserve Act of nineteen thirteen, these are who you call the administrators. We must hold them accountable. From the Jesuits overseeing the Federal Reserve. Their lobbyists. And from their lobbyists to their governors, mayors, house of representatives, senators. On down to their judges, lawyers, attorneys, esquires. On down to their police, sheriff, marshals. And all of their different departments. They're all administrators, administering what? Crimes against humanity. Administering what? Cohesion, corruption. Fraud. They're administering what? Compulsory jurisdiction. Territorial jurisdiction. Usurpation. We must understand, Moors, who are we talking about right now? The administrators, not their peasants. Their peasants. They don't discriminate with their peasants, everybody's a peasant to them. No matter what your crayon status is, you are a peasant, what does that mean? They feed off the ignorance of the people and the persons. Who? The administrators, so always remember that, Moors. Who are we dealing with right now? The administrators. Not their everyday Joe Blow out here on the street that's working the nine to five job. We're talking about the administrators on behalf of their so-called government, which is a private entity. Maintaining private interests, okay? Let's get back to point. Okay, mother, if you can read this.
Now, wait a minute, what are we talking about?
Tenure, okay? Okay, mother, start here, please.
Tenure is the direct result of feudalism, which separated the dominion directum. The dominion of the soil, which is placed immediately or immediately in the crown from the dominion. Use tile. The possessori, the possessori title, the right to the use and profits in the soil designated by the term. Sizing, which is the highest interest a subject can acquire.
Thank you, mother. Confessions. By the administrators, I E. the criminals. They just trolling themselves, listen, Moors. Tenure is the direct result of feudalism, we learned about feudalism, what's feudalism? Feuding with the owls. That's their colonies. Your bankers. Okay? Which separated the dominium, dominium, directum. What does that mean? The dominion of the soil, what happened? What was separated, what's separated, look, Moors, separated. From the soil. What's separated from the soil? Feudalism. They're not talking about the soil, listen, Moors. Feudalism. Is not an ownership of soil. It is what you call an overlay. It's like astroturf over top of soil, it's an overlay, we'll learn about that. They're confessing that their warranty deeds is an overlay of feudalism that's separated from the soil, separated from the soil, separated from the soil, what's separated from the soil? Feudalism. Cause everything they own is based upon feudal law. Color of law. Color of authority. Color of title. Color of office. That's what feudal law is, feudalism. Okay? Okay, let's start from the top, tenure is the direct result of feudalism, so tenure is based upon feudalism. I E. statutes. Which separated the what? Separated from what? The dominion. What is dominion? The soil, you see how they confess? So when Moors are talking about the dominion. Versus their state statutes, they know exactly what we're talking about. Don't let them pretend like they don't, that, that they don't know what we're talking about. Which is placed immediately or immediately in the crown, what's, what's the crown, boys? Taj Me Bay taught us about this word recently, crown, what's the crown? The administrators. Who are the administrators? Judges, lawyers, attorneys. Barristers, esquires. Right? Lobbyists. Bankers. And all their minions called police, sheriff, marshals, et cetera, all their state departments. Their minions, all administrators on behalf of the crown, the crown. Is the Jesuits and all the colonies working together to control the Moors estate. That must be understood, they confess it. That the feudalism. Is about the crown. From the dominion. Okay, so the crown is separated from the dominion. That's why they put it here in plain English. Over here, they're talking what? Latin. Spanish, et cetera, right? The possessori title, now they're talking what? What's possessori title? Feudalism. What's possessori title? Tenure. You possess. Cause they can hold property. They can only hold it. They can't own it. Cause their holding status is temporary. Is what? The right to use the profits in the soil. Designated by the term. Sizing? Sizing, that's right, which is the highest interest a subject can acquire. The highest status they could ever have. As subjects. It's feudalism. Tenure, to hold, but not to own. But then use the profits that come out of the soil, they can't own the soil, but they can use the soil. And anything that comes out of that soil, we get the taxes. Article four. Of the Act of Altus Eras nineteen oh six. What is the title of article four? To create what? Taxes and revenue for Morocco. Okay, boy, let's continue. Promissory. Wait a minute, why are we looking at promissory? Because they keep making promises. What type of promises? Warranty is what? A promise. Let's talk about this promise. Okay. Let's look at the word promissory, cause they're talking about promissory. Okay? Promissory, okay, mother?
Promissory containing or consisting of a promise. In the nature of a promise, stipulating or engaging for a future act or course of conduct. As to promissory oath, representation and warranty, see those titles.
Thank you, mother. They're confessing. What's a promise, based upon their definition? Containing or consisting of a promise. So the promise is the warranty. In the nature of promise, stipulating or engaging for a future act or course of conduct. As to promissory, it's an oath. Representation and warranty, see those titles. So a promissory can be both positive or negative. Moors must be seeking equality, that's a promise. To maintain the treaties and constitutions. Mother's law, nature's law, that's a promise. But the colonies use it as a negative promise. They don't mean their promise, and they define their promise, cause they tell you do what? Go back and look up oath, representation and warranty, based upon what type of promise they're talking about. And their warranty is what? Contemporaneous. It's only as good until you expose the trick. Cause they're magis, magicians using smoke and mirrors through words. Cause they're wizards, wizard, compound word, wise words. But they're negative spells. They're talking about their type of promise. Negative promise. Note. Now the word note. Promissory note. Promissory note. Promissory note, a promise to the note, they're always talking about their notes, what type of notes? A note is similar to the warranty deed, what is a note? It's just a piece of paper. Just a piece of paper, wait a minute. I have a one hundred Federal Reserve note.
I'll take that note.
I'll make, I'll make note of that. All right. Why do I have this in my hand? Right here. If you look on it. Especially on the, the one hundred note, right here, the top left-hand corner, it says what? Federal Reserve note. Let's define note, what is a note? Nothing but a piece of paper. People write notes. It's a piece of paper. Okay, let's understand what is a note, we're talking warranty deed. Was a note, it's a promise. Let's learn about that. Okay, mother, note.
Note, now, a unilateral.
Unilateral.
Una.
Unilateral.
Uni-lateral instrument containing and express an absolute promise of signer to pay to a specified person or order or bearer. A definite sum of money at a specified time, case law. An abstract. A memorandum. An informal statement in writing.
Okay. Thank you, mother. Confessions. By a criminal, I E. the administrators. Who put together what's called statutes. Let's learn what a note is, this is what they're writing. Note, now. A unilateral instrument, right there in there, you gotta understand, what is a note? Ex parte unilateral, meaning it's not a real contract, cause two parties didn't sign it. Uni, uni, lateral, okay, one. A unilateral instrument containing, so what's the instrument? Instrument. Warranty deed is instrument. Their statute is an instrument, proper written instrument, proper written instrument. Instrument containing and express an absolute promise. It's absolute promise. Of a signer to pay a specific specified person or order or bearer. A definite sum of money at a specified time, specified time, keep talking about time. Contemporaneous. Tenure. Time. So what's happening? The note. Unilateral. It's not a contract. It had no judicial standing in law, cause two people didn't sign it. Somebody didn't agree. But yet somebody signed it, and that person's held to responsibility obligations. Of performing best, based upon the terms and conditions. But they don't realize the other party didn't sign it, it's not a contract. Unless it's bilateral. Not uni-lateral. If it's bilateral, that's a contract. Not uni-lateral. So therefore. This is uni-lateral, it's a note. It says it on it. Federal Reserve note, what's a note? Unilateral. Okay? Let's continue, listen. An abstract, what's an abstract? It's only in your head, you think is real. It's a fact. But is it true?
It's just a tool.
We're talking warranty deed, warranty, definition of warranty, says what? Fact. But is it true? You ask the average person, is this money? They say, yeah. Why? Cause they think it's a fact, material fact, tangible substance. But is it money? Is it true? No. You see how they talk? Fact. Not true. It's cause it's abstracts in your head that you think is real, and that's what they feed off of, your ignorance. Your cognitive dissonance. A memorandum, what's a memorandum? A note, a letter. Paper, something written on paper, a memo. Memorandum. Talking warranty deed. An informal statement in writing, listen, Moors. A note is an informal statement in writing. Informal. Statement in writing, note. Their warranty deed is what? A note, it's an informal statement in writing, their warranty deed is informal. Why? Because it's uni-lateral, what makes their warranty deed uni-lateral, cause the Kai D didn't sign it as well. It would made it bilateral, the warranty deed would have been bilateral if the Kai D would have put his state seal. Validation on it as well, but since the Kai D did not put his satisfaction of the validity of that deed, that it makes it uni-lateral, which means they have a note. Promissory note, that they are the holder in due course of something that's dishonored and defective. Because it's contemporaneous. In a snapshot of time. Cause it's abstract in your brain that you think is real. You think your warranty deed is real. You think this hundred note is real, it's your abstract. They tell you, they confess, it's just an abstract. It's in your head, Dorothy. It's just a memorandum. We're gonna learn about memorandum. It's an informal statement in writing, they're confessing. Let's continue. Okay. They're talking about memorandum, what is that? Why are they specifying that? Okay, mother, let's find out. Note or memorandum, note. Or memorandum, note or memorandum, okay, mother, please.
Notes or memorandum, under statute of frauds and informal minute or memorandum made on the spot. Case law, it must contain all the essential elements and substantial parts of the contract.
So a memorandum is what? A note or memorandum is what? Under statute, so first they tell you under statute, their statute is based upon tenure, their tenure is based upon feudal law. Color of law, color of title, color of office. Statutes of frauds. They wrote the book. But they think their karmatic debt is going to save them. And they never thought the Moors gonna wake up and read. Cause the Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition came out in nineteen fifty-one. We're in the twenty-first century. Note or memorandum under statute frauds. So their notes and their memorandums are under statute of frauds, wait. Federal Reserve note is what? Under statute of frauds. Their warranty deed is under statute of frauds. False representation. An informal minute or memorandum made on the spot, what's on the spot? Contemporaneous. It must contain all the essential elements. And substantial parts of the contract, it must contain, what must? Everything must be contemporaneous, based upon notes and memorandums. They're all based in fraud. Must. Why are we going over this? The Moors must understand, when we put together our state provincial government. We must have the confidence and the competence to move forward with our pen. Because we're recognizing that they point out their own illegal acts. Who are we as Moors not to move forward and enforce the treaties? When we can't enforce the treaty without having a de jour competent government. When we can't enforce the treaty without having a de jure competent government? None of us can be self-appointed in order to enforce our constitution and treaties with the supreme law of the land. The supreme law of the land says, Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Moors must come back in consent to a Moroccan government. We have to do that in order to enforce the treaties and constitutions. In the meanwhile, the citizens of the United States, more specifically the administrators, get to maintain what's called their mayhem of fraud until we make the proper claim through Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That must be understood, Moors. Wait a minute. What's a promissory note? We just defined what's note. We looked up definition of promissory. Let's put the words together. Promissory note. Holder in due course. They have a promissory note. We learned and understood, promissory don't mean nothing. Note don't mean anything. It's all based in what? Fraud. Put the words together, now you got two words that mean fraud. Well, let's understand when they say promissory note. Okay, mother.
Promissory note, a promise or engagement in writing to pay a specified sum at a time therein limited or on demand or at sight to a person therein named or to his order or bearer. Case law. A written promise made by one or more to pay another or order or bearer at a specified time, a specific amount of money or other articles. Case law. An unconditional written promise assigned by the maker to pay absolutely and at all events a sum certain in money either to the bearer or to a person therein designated or his order. Case law. At a time specified therein or at a time which must certainly arrive.
So, let's stop there, go back. You didn't understand any? Thank you, mother. Then we'll continue with the reading. Promissory note. You got a promissory note? They asked about that. What's a promissory note? Promissory note. This is a debt, with a promise to pay back the debt, because it's a debt. Federal Reserve note is a promissory note, okay? A warranty deed is a promissory note. So right at the back, it say a promise. Well, we already know what promise is. It's fraud. Or engagement in writing. So everything they put in writing is fraud. Because they defined promise under what? Warranty. Warranty, we learned is what? Erodeous. Fraud, false statements. But they say it's a fact, but is it true? You don't know if it's true till you go back and validate the fact. But it's on you. The obligation is buyer beware. On promissory note or on, or on demand or at sight to a person therein named or to his order or bearer. Okay? Listen, Moors. A promise or engagement in writing to pay specified sum at a time. Talking about that time again, contemporary. They always talking about time, right? Because they know everything they do is in a snapshot. Everything they do is only valid right there in that moment. Because they know if somebody come back and validate it, then the game is up. Like a thief steal a car, they gonna try to sell the car real quick. Thief is gonna sell it in that quick moment. Hoping you give him the money, and he gonna run out real quick. Somebody steal a watch, they gonna sell it real quick. Snapshot, contemporary. Right? Gotta knock it out real quick in time. That's why they keep talking about time. Clocks are destiny. They know that they gotta get away with all their mayhem while they have time. They continue on, right here. A written promise made by one or more to pay another or order or bearer at a specified time. A specific amount of money. Well, we know money is gold and silver coin. So they're confessing, they know money is gold and silver coin. But they gave us what? Promissory note. Well, we know a promise and a note is fraud. These are their unconfessions. Okay, let's continue with the reading. An unconditional written promise. It's unconditional. A promissory note, a promise is unconditional. Why? It's unilateral. Who made the other promise? Two people then promised. Only one did. Who's the one who made the promise? The sucker. The person who deals with abstract cognitive dissonance. You gotta understand what's happening, Moors. This is the reason why John D Rockefeller, Frederick T Gates of nineteen oh two, the Education Board dummy the people down and got them beholden to abstract statutes that are unilateral, making the citizens of the United States think they're obligated to things that's not a contract. So therefore, they're doing everything based upon volunteer status. They volunteer. And they submit because of use of force, coercion, and corruption, even though it's a unilateral contract. Because the other side never promised anything. But everybody else on the other side of the table signed based upon they think they have obligations and the other side does not. And they look at you saying, well, I never agreed. Who am I talking about? The administrators never agreed to nothing. But everybody else based upon what's called taking advantage of people's virtues. The virtues of the people on the other side of the table agree to something. They think they're obligated, and the administrators never agreed to it. And because of people's virtues, they think they're sticking to their obligations and their promise, while the administrators on the side of the table, their promise is based in fraud. They got a promise based in fraud. They got warranties based in fraud. They got notes based in fraud. You gotta understand what's happening, Moors.
The illusion and the thing that people are really, you know, selling their soul over money, that's a promissory note.
Yes.
We slay every day for these corporations for a promissory note.
Okay, let's continue the reading. Alright, let's start here. At a time specified therein. Talking about that time again, contemporary. Or at a time which must be certainly arrived. Talking about that time again, contemporary. Okay, let's continue. Okay, we're looking at the definition of promissory note. Keep that in mind. Alright, mother, please.
A written promise to pay a certain sum of money at a future time, unconditionally, case law. By the Uniform Negotiable Instruments Act. Oh, I'm reading case law.
No, that's, that's good reading. Continue.
Instrument Act. Okay, let me start over. A written promise to pay a certain sum of money at a future time, unconditionally. By the Uniform Negoti- Negotiable Instruments Act. A negotiable promissory note is defined as an unconditional promise in writing made by one person to another, signed by the maker engaging to pay or demand or at a fixed or determinable future time. A sum certain in money to order or to bearer. Where a note is drawn to the maker's own order, it is not complete until endorsed by him.
Alright. Confessions by a criminal, i.e. the administrators. Promissory note. A written promise to pay a certain sum of money at a future time, unconditionally. Why do they say unconditionally? Because they know it's a unilateral agreement that the administrator on this side never agreed to anything. But they know that the buyer of the goods or the person that they're taking advantage of their virtue agreed to something with their pen. So it's one side. This side signed, this side did not. So what do they do to create a loophole for these people to now do what? Negotiate. Even post facto, after they've agreed, they can still come back and negotiate. Why? Because they never had a contract in the first place. Listen. A written promise to pay a certain sum of money at a future time, unconditionally. Unconditional. Why? Two parties didn't sign it. Doesn't have a contract. By the Uniform Negotiable Instrument Act. So now they're telling you the statute, that everything is negotiable as it relates to their Federal Reserve note or to their warranty deed. A negotiable promissory note is defined as unconditional promise. Confessions by a criminal, i.e. the administrators, in writing made by who? One person to another, signed by the maker engaging to pay on demand. So only one person signed, not two. Or at a fixed or determined future time, a sum certain in money to order to a bearer. Where a note is drawn to the maker's own order, it is not complete until endorsed by him. See? The administrators saying it's not complete unless they sign it. It's, it's unilateral. It has no judicial standing in law. If you challenge it, because it's negotiable, because there's not two signatures. It's incomplete contract. If you got a lease agreement. Let's say you stay in apartment. You sign it, landlord don't sign it. You get the contract in your hand, you say landlord didn't sign it, but I see my signature. Let's say you want to get out that contract. Three or four months later, something happened, you want to get out. You go to them, go to them and say, look, property manager, I can't maintain this lease agreement anymore. I'm just giving you my thirty-day notice, I'm out of here. They say, well, you can't break the contract. You say, well, wait a minute. You, you didn't sign it. It's unilateral. I signed it, you didn't sign it, which means it's not a contract. It's negotiable. So we can negotiate this one way or another, because you failed to sign it, landlord. That's what's called unilateral. They failed to sign it. Well, right here, the colonists, i.e. the administrators, the criminals, are letting you know, they didn't sign it. So everything's negotiable. Their warranty deeds are negotiable. Because they never signed it. Only the buyer signed it. Because the bankers all know they're asking in fraud. They're trying to say, well, we, we have what's called plausible denial. Plausible denial. Plausible denial, because we never signed it, so we're not obligated to it. It's a unilateral contract. You obligated yourself. And then, then you turn around, you, you sign it. You're giving what's called de donis payments to the administrator. You're gifting him something, because you don't have a contract, so you sending him payments. De donis payments based on what they call de donis contracts. You're giving him gifts. Because he's saying, well, I never signed it. So whatever you're giving me is because you obligated yourself to giving it to me, so you're just giving me gifts. Because you were never technically obligated to pay, because the administrator never signed. You gotta understand that, Moors. This is they think they get out of jail free card. I'm gonna say the sentence again. Where a note is drawn to the maker's own order. So who made it? Administrator. It is not complete until endorsed by him. It's incomplete. Unilateral and not bilateral. Let's continue. Okay, Moors. What, what are we talking about right now? We're talking about our government. We must enforce our government that's de jure incompetent for the people, by the people, because the administrators already admitting everything they do is fraudulent. They're admitting that, they're maintaining what's called organized crime. They're admitting that everything they do is legally invalid, morally condemnable, and socially repugnant, et cetera. You gotta understand what's happening here. They're already admitting to you. All you gotta do is come back and make the claim. Negotiate. How did you negotiate? Through your government. It's not emotions. It's intelligence, counterintelligence through your state. So you're utilizing counsel, court, and the KI D of the state to do what? Deal with subject matter. Let's say we're talking about the JAD. Okay, how you deal with the JAD? Counsel, court, and the KI D of the state deal with the JAD through what? Mother's law, which is the legislative branch, which is the matriarchal council. The matriarchal council says, okay, the colonists are trying to maintain extraterritorial jurisdiction, even though they claim they relinquished it in nineteen fifty-six, they did not. Remember, they made a promise. They signed a note. They gave warranties, they relinquished. But did they? No, because they're frauds. So now we must use our de jure government to enforce mother's law. Don't worry about their statutes. I asked you the question, what is the name of your state provincial government? Because if you can tell me that and show me your constitution, your circle seven state of facts, now you can enforce your law. Don't worry about what they're doing. Question is, what are you doing? What law are you using? What principles are you using through your state to enforce through counsel, court? Then you bring in the KI D to deal with those warranty deeds. So what's happening? They talked about everything was an abstract, right? Abstract, he uses word abstract. What are they talking about? They're talking about this. What is this? This is an abstract. You think in your head, this is the United States of America. That's in your head through indoctrination. Abstract. But the truth is, this is a fact, right? This is a fact. Most people say, that's a fact. What's the truth? That's the truth. It's always been Morocco. What are we doing right now through our fundamentals? Learning about who they are and who they are not. While simultaneously learning about who we are and who we are not. We're building up fundamentals to now try to unlearn what we've learned. And replace it with what? The de jure competent truth about Morocco. It's always been Morocco. But there's been overlay. What's the overlay? This. Overlay. It's like astroturf over top of the soil. It's only in your head. But as soon as you come back into the consciousness like Dorothy, you click your heel three times. One, two, three. You merely come back into the de jure competent status of what? Morocco. But now you must enforce it through your material facts. It can't be your abstract. It can't be your mere expression out of your mouth. It can't be your mere expression out of your mouth that you're self appointed. You must be able to prove it through material facts, how do you prove it through material facts? At the very least, you need your circle seven state of facts. That you can prove on the record, cause when you do that. This becomes a part of fruition, because this is the reality, this is the truth. But. This is the fact in your head. And the colonists already admitting on the record that all of this is a fraud. Moors gotta come back and make the proper de jour competent claim, Article twenty two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And get this abstract out of your head. And the only way to do that, you must understand yourself. Know what Dr. Ali said what, if I could just get the people thinking again, they would save themselves, what are you talking about? Getting rid of that indoctrination, that abstract, which is false representation, this is a false representation. This is a material fact, yes, but is it true? No, why? Cause it's really this, this is the soil. The soil. Astroturf overlay over top of the soil. But the only way to get the United States abstract out of our jurisdiction. Moors must create their constitution, Moors constitution. And claim the permanent territory based upon that constitution, latitude longitude. Put together their three branches of government. Legislative branch, judicial branch, executive branch and be de jour incompetent. The only way we're gonna get the Wizard of Oz out of our heads. We must take our abstract positive thinking and put it into a pen, we must take our think to ink. And create the constitution, I end with that.